Tara Niahausen, Terry Turner, and Vince Giannino. Vince is also the owner of Gattano's and Pekinis. I'm probably pronouncing something wrong there. And thanks to our volunteers from Torrance Memorial Medical Center, Erin Florido, Johanna Johnson-Gilman, and Claire Cognard. Claire provided the desserts on October 17th. I have a lot of names and mispronunciations, so bear with me. Long list. heartfelt appreciation to the PV Peninsula Association of Realtors, CEO Jennifer Gorchenko, President Jason Buck, Michelle Duval, Silk Schroeder, Sebs Ibrahim, Lisa Cairo, Virginia Butler, Les Fishman, Kevin Moyn, Cindy Chu, Dana Graham, Mayuko Akada, Taisha Hinchliff, and Jackie Enrich. Thanks to our Seaview Residence Association members, Lori Givens, Kit Song, Qui Lee, Deidra Heimer, and Karen Breck. And a special shout out to our Rotary Club of San Pedro for their support and for providing desserts on November 6. Special thanks to the Palos Verdes Peninsula Rotary Club, President Lindsay Glass, Peggy Purinton, Rick Humphrey, Donna Duparon, Paul Klaus, David Rowe, Carol Levy, Christine Chu, Phyllis Pellozari, Jim Hartman, and Pat Hartman. And a very, very special thanks to Julie Parton-Rosas, past president of the PVP Rotary This extraordinary effort would not have happened without her dedication, passion, and a desire to support her beloved community. Do you want me to have them come up with the certificates now or continue on?
Well, how many more are there?
There's no more names. All right. Why does everyone that I mentioned, and if I didn't mention you but you helped, please just come up? And I'm sorry if I didn't mention you. In fact, everyone just come up.
And Mr. Mayor, we also have some people participating via Zoom, too.
Okay. They can't come up.
Yeah, they can't go in.
Wonderful work.
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 I'm going to pronounce names, but whatever.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to say something in the spirit of all the volunteers. You know, when this idea was first brought up, I know we've been working very closely with Julia Parton, with the Rotary Club. And from the very beginning, when we had all the utility shut offs, and immediately we reached out to the Rotary and said, how can we help? What can we do to help the affected residents? And without any hesitation, Julia and the Rotary stepped up, and so many people have stepped up to help so many residents that have been affected by what they're experiencing. Not only are the people in the landslide area affected by the land movement, but with the utility shut offs and all that was going on, when we got to a point and said, let's try to do something to bring people together and bring some joy to what is a very traumatic experience, we immediately got such community response. And I remember going to that first dinner on October 3rd and just seeing, we didn't have a huge crowd come out, but it was enough where I think the word was starting to get, as we started at 5:00 at Ladera Linda, and by 7:00, I think the word, some people were showing up and then going back home and telling their others, and then people were driving up saying, oh, I didn't realize this was happening. And then the second dinner that we had the following Wednesday, which I think was October 9th, we had well over 200 people show up and stay. And I know I've been to every single one except for one dinner that I missed because of a council meeting, but the energy in that room and knowing many of the individuals and seeing what the volunteers were able to bring that joy and that spirit to the community really resonated. And I want everyone to know and the volunteers to know, look at all the people that came out for you to say thank you. And I just think we should give another big round of applause. Thank you. Yes.
And before you leave, there are a few more things. I do some notes here that I want to mention. Of course, this is the best time of year to be bringing people together during our holidays. And, you know, we're all, all five council members are so thrilled about this Men the Bend. And so the one thing that we do want to mention, though, is that there is going to be this Men the Bend Thanksgiving Dinner program. And individual complimentary Thanksgiving dinners are going to be provided by Terranea Resort. Advanced reservations are required by 5:30 Monday, the 25th, which is next Monday, to RSVP to LandMovement@rpvca.gov. So make sure, if you're in the landslide area, make sure you get your reservation for your Thanksgiving dinner. And of course, we want to thank our friends at Choa and St. Peters by the Sea for helping serve those meals. And of course, the people from Choa, St. Peters, Terranea, we can't thank you enough for what you've done for us as well. So let's give them a hand. So I know that they're going to need a few volunteers. I've already told Ara, I'm going to volunteer. I'm sure there's others that want to help pick up meals and deliver them to the residents on Thanksgiving Day between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock. And I think that this is just a really, so many things have been so tough on our residents over the last couple of years. It's just really great to see that our businesses and our residents and our support and service groups are doing all these extra things for our residents. And, you know, this isn't something that government does. This is something that you guys are doing. And so we very much appreciate that. It's very heartwarming to all of us. And when I heard that Thanksgiving dinner was going to be available, that really added a special amount of joy to me. So with that, I want to thank all you for being here tonight and all of the people in the landslide area that have had to endure so much. I know you guys have been very resilient. There's still a lot of work to do. We are going to be talking about the landslide tonight, so you don't have to go rush off and watch whatever's on Tuesday night. But we are going to be getting an update there, and I think you're going to hear some --
You can watch us.
You can watch us. And I think there's going to be some, you know, not 100% positive news, but I think our geologist is going to, you know, tell you about the work that they've been doing, and it's been important work. So once again, thank you all.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, we'll have flyers for Thanksgiving dinner at tomorrow's dinner. Like the mayor said, we need reservations for those individuals that do want to order a meal. It'll be individually packed for individuals of the household, and we'll be distributing with volunteers on Thanksgiving afternoon between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. So the flyers will be available. And again, we have to, we need reservations so that Terranea has a head count.
You are. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Next item, please. Unless any of my colleagues want to make any, yes, Mayor Protem, sorry, I should have done that.
I'll just make a brief comment, Mayor. I think I'll just underscore what Ara said a moment ago. You know, oftentimes, I'm sure my colleagues get the same question, which is, why do you want to be involved with the community? And the answer is moments like this, that really exemplify the fact that it's really, there's no act that's too small. And Ara, you said it a moment ago, during the very difficult months, prior months, and certainly we're still in it, one of the questions that I appreciated the most that I got from actually several people in the audience and several others who aren't here tonight, which is exactly what you said, which is, how can I help? And there's just been an outpouring of, and a willingness to support the community during this particular time. And Men the Bend to me is one great embodiment of that, you know, overall spirit in our community to just help one each, help each other out and one another during a very difficult time. So I too just want to underscore, Mr. Mayor, how much I appreciate, I know this whole council does, all of you taking your time, your personal time, to go out and help our residents during a difficult time. That really speaks to what we're all about as a peninsula, so thank you.
Not if you're the rest.
Sure.
Councilmember Bradley, please.
Thank you, Mayor Kropchink. Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the dinner last week with the mayor. And I think not only what we have done with the volunteers, but the ability for us to have a community come together was really special. I know a lot of people have been going through some very traumatic times, and the idea of being able to come together at Ladera Linda Community Center and take a little brief respite from some of the craziness that's going on in the landslide area was really nice, because I think people were really enjoying themselves. I saw some smiles on people's faces. That was really heartening. So, you know, there's a silver lining in every dark cloud. Hopefully, this is our silver lining, and hopefully later tonight, our city geologist is going to be giving us even better news on how things are going. And I think our Director of Public Works is also going to be able to give us some ideas of some things that we're doing to hopefully retard things as we enter the wet season. So, thank you, Mayor Kropchink.
No, thank you, Councilmember Seo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge everyone that, you know, invested their time and treasure to come out and help our community. And one of the biggest things that I saw, I was there on the first meal with Ara, one of the things I saw with everybody there, they were just so warm and ready to receive everyone from the community and help them out, and they were so engaged, and you can feel the love that they had for the RPV family. And one of the things I just wanted to say on behalf of the city and the city council is, thank you very much for investing your time and energy to helping others that are in need. And for the businesses, you know, that's something that you guys didn't have to do, but you guys stepped up and did it. And I hope, you know, that blessing comes back to you guys tenfold. I know that a lot of us go to the restaurants that are in our community. You guys come out and step up, and just seeing that shows how much RPV is committed to each other as a community and as, just as businesses, and how vital part of our community everyone is, to include businesses and the community members and everyone just pitching in together. So thank you very much for investing your time and your energy, and hopefully, like the mayor was saying, going forward, we can turn the lights back on and get the gas on and get everybody back on their feet again so that everybody can actually enjoy the restaurants by going there, as opposed to at Ladera Linda. So thank you very much, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well said. And Councilmember Farah.
Just another thank you, because we have such wonderful people in our area. And sometimes I think, you know, we get so involved in our own lives and what we're doing, that we don't really realize until we need help, how many great people there are in our neighborhoods. And so thank you all for what you've done to help each other and to help in the community, because it really makes a difference. We have a wonderful community here, and you all are just the shining stars. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Next item is by affirmation to move approval of the recycle and emergency personal preparedness kit drawing winners. Anthony De Clu.
Oh, your microphone. Yes.
Our next item is to move by approval the recycle and emergency personal preparedness kit drawing winners, Anthony De Clu and Karen Hoag.
So moved. Thank you.
Our next item then is the approval of the agenda.
Move. I'll move approval. Second.
Seconded.
Councilman Bradley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilman Seo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alegria.
Yes.
Mayor Kropchink.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our public comments for non-agenda items, and my speaker is Carol Mueller. Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. I've lost patience, so I know that the landslides have taken its toll, but I moved from Westchester, and I had cracks in my house when I left there, too. But my problem is, and so many others, our internet doesn't work, our phones don't work. I can't even make an emergency call half of the time, you know. I think it's time to direct some attention to the internet. And specifically, I want to know, I called Dida, but he said he was retired, and I saw him here last week. But who authorized PVE, who is undergrounded, to tie all of their wires, electricity and gas and whatever, into the RPV poles and wires? Why didn't they tell them to go take a hike and put the pole back a block off of Via Cornell? I think that's the problem. I buy two, I bought two phones so far. Neither one of them work at my house, right? And the internet doesn't work. I'm tired of hearing people say, oh, you just don't know how to do it. I'm sorry, but I have other people that have come to my house, and they can't do it either. It's time to fix it. Is it PVE tied into the wires? I have 1,000 wires into my house. Maybe they should be divided up a little bit? I don't know. Anyway, it's been going on since 2016, and I think we're all getting tired of it. So are other people. They can't understand why nobody at RPV has any control over anything anymore. So that's all I have to say. Let's get it fixed, because I need my phone and I need my internet working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the city manager report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and our viewing audience. So tonight, I'm going to start my city manager's report with the privilege and great pleasure to introduce a new member of the RPV family, the RPV team. I'd like to introduce our new finance deputy director, Robert Moya, who joined the city a week ago. Welcome, Robert. We are so fortunate to have Robert join our team. He's got a very illustrative career, and he's 20 years of finance management in the finance world. He actually is coming to us from the city of Orange, which it may sound familiar to you, because we lost someone to the city of Orange, but I think we did a crisscross, and now Robert is joining our team. And I know Vina, the finance director, is ecstatic to have a partner now and a deputy to help her out. And so we're very thrilled to have Robert join the team. And he's got several degrees, and one of his degrees is a JD degree, so he's got some law in his blood. So anyway, we're very happy that you're here, and thank you for coming this evening. We'll be seeing a lot more of Robert as we begin the budget season come the new year. So thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Robert. So moving on to the next slide, and I'm glad that many of the residents decided to stay regarding the landslide. And I'm probably going to be repeating something that you're going to hear in the presentation this evening on the agenda item, but I thought it's worth pointing out that a lot of people are curious and want to know what some of the numbers are in response to the voluntary property buyout program. So we put this slide together to just give you some of the stats. At the close of the buyout program, the deadline to submit an application, which was Friday, November 8th, the city received 85 applications from residents. Very interesting, when you looked at the breakdown of where those applications came from, 52 are from the Portuguese Bend Community Association, 21 is from the Seaview Neighborhood, and 12 from the Portuguese Bend Beach Club. Of those properties, and I just want to stress that it was not mandatory as part of the application process, but the city had asked if you voluntarily would like us to come inspect your property. The way that the program is prioritized is if you are red tagged, you will move up on the list, and the reason being is the program is intended to remove that public health and safety risk. And so that's why we wanted to make sure we had red tagged properties acknowledged. And so we conducted, of those 85 properties, we conducted 70 inspections. 20 were red tagged of the homes that we inspected, 37 yellow tagged, and 14, we're calling them green tagged. Essentially, there was no noticeable concern to the building official in terms of structural stress in response to the properties. The, and the reason why I've got two numbers here, we, during the inspection, there were actually 20 red tagged, but only 19 of those are, did we correct that? It's 20. Okay, so those are in the, of the applications. 39 were yellow tagged, but two of the properties that were yellow tagged did not submit an application. And then there are 20 green tags. So those were all the inspections that we conducted over that three-week period. And I know many residents have been reaching out to us since the deadline, asking, when can we hear from the city whether we're going to be selected for the buyout? It's going to take several weeks, if not longer than that. The application, the grant application, we're coordinating with CalOES, is due to FEMA, because it is a FEMA grant. It's due November 29th, so we're moving very fast to get that whole package to FEMA by November 29th. We have to do the cost-benefit analysis before we find out whether, which of those properties are going to move forward. The other thing I would like to point out, at 85 applications, the $42 million that has been set aside for this cycle of the grant will likely only get us about, be able to purchase 20 properties. So we're going through that prioritization, and certainly the red tags are going to be listed at the higher of the priority, followed by the yellow tag properties. And not all of the red tag will be eligible based on certain criteria, but we'll bring that all forward, and we'll let the public know when we get to that point in this process. So that, I just want to provide that update for the council and the public's benefit. Next slide. And also for the residents, assessor Prang had reached out and wanted us to remind residents that anyone who's been adversely impacted by the landslide, especially experiencing structural stress, that the application processing for the decline in your value of the properties due at the end of the month on November 30th. So if you have experienced damage to your property and you want it to be reassessed in response, make sure you submit your application by November 30th. That information is available on the county's website, the assessor's website, or you can go to the city's website, and we have a link that will connect you to the county assessor's office. Next slide. So, and Captain Guerrero is going to be, I appreciate this slide. This was news to me, and I thought I'd share it with the council and the public. The sheriff's department actually has an online portal for submitting claims or reports for incidents where you're a victim of a certain crime that has a value of $950 or less. This is whether you, someone stolen your, you lost your phone, or it was stolen, or someone broke into your car, or broke into your home and took a property of $950 or less. You can go online and submit your report, and it's called the SORTS program, which I believe stands for the Sheriff's Online Reporting Tracking System. So that's, the acronym is SORTS. So I just wanted to let the public know, I think that's, sometimes you call and you have to wait hours for the sheriff's department to come take a report, because those are not emergent calls. You could do that online if you believe the value is $950 or less. So next slide. I just want to remind residents, and this is primarily for our single-family residential zones, not the multifamily or the commercial or institutional zoning districts, but starting January 1st, 2019, the city has an ordinance that is in effect that prohibits the use of gas-powered leaf blowers only in residential neighborhoods. So I thought every so often, I want to just remind residents, and we're not trying to be punitive here, we're trying to be friendly to the environment and to the residents in the neighborhood. And so if you have a gardener that's using a gas-powered blower, please let them know that they can buy electric or battery power. There are rebates if you go online and with the utility companies, you can get rebates for these types of devices. I believe even the South Bay Cog has a link where you can get some rebates where it's almost costs, it barely costs anything to replace your equipment. So just wanted to remind residents of that and move on to the next slide. And the council may know, you, as part of your budget this year, you allocated $100,000 as part of the Western Avenue beautification, and that this is a program specific to the Western Avenue storefront improvement program. So all of our businesses out there that are on Western Avenue, you could apply for a grant between $5,000 to $20,000. Those applications are due by December 1st, so that is creeping up pretty quickly here. So if you're a merchant out there and you want to do some facade improvements to your establishment, please submit the application to the planning department, and it's available on the city's website. Next slide. So yes, the holidays are upon us, and I know Thanksgiving is almost a week away, but we're going to start talking about Christmas and all the other holidays. So in the city's tradition, I think we're entering our fourth year of doing the tree lighting. We're adding a menorah this year, and that's going to be Friday, December 6th. We've got a weekend full of activities at the Kendita Civic Center, which includes this year roller skating in the park. So the last couple of years, we were doing ice skating in the park. We decided to kind of change it up and see how the public responds, so we've got roller skating in the park. Friday on December 6th, we are going to have a ceremonial event where we light the menorah and light the Christmas tree. We'll have music, we'll have food trucks, we'll have a coffee stand, a hot chocolate stand.
Snow globe?
We dance? I think so.
Outstanding.
There's a competition.
Thank you, Dan.
Another competition that doesn't involve pie, right?
Yeah.
So, and they understand what I mean by that. So that's on Friday, and then, of course, the roller skating is Saturday and Sunday as well, and that's from 12:30 to, I believe, 7:30 on Saturday and Sunday. Next slide. And of course, that weekend on Saturday, December 7th, Rolling Hills Estates is having their annual Peninsula Parade of Lights. I know the council is all going to attend. I'm attending. We're going to ride in our vehicles and greet all the public. And so it's great, come on out. It's another way of just escaping everything that's going on, and it's in and around the promenade, so it's a lot of fun, always a lot of fun to be out there. Next slide. And Santa Claus is coming to RPV early this year, because we're such a special city, so I just wanted to put the dates that Santa Claus will be driving around, thanks to the sheriff's department. They'll be escorting Santa Claus on December 13th, 18th, 19th, and 20th. I'm not going to go over the list of the street names, but we'll put that information on the city's website. But I know, if you notice, on December 20th, they're going to be going around the Seaview Neighborhood, so for some of those residents out there. Next slide. And we are also partnering with the sheriff's department. Every year, we do the annual holiday toy drive. We will have a box at City Hall as well as Point Vicente interpretive center. This is a great time, and this holiday season, not only are we grateful for so much, but it's an opportunity to give to those in need. And so if you're able to bring an unwrapped toy to City Hall or PVIC by December 17th, and the sheriff's department will collect it and donate it to Toys for Tots. Next slide. And I know many are following the reorganization and the election results, but we're not going to have the final results from the county by the December 3rd city council meeting. And so the reorganization is being scheduled as a special meeting on December 11th at 6:00 p.m. It'll just be a ceremonial event, so mark your calendars. We're going to be saying goodbye to two of our council members and welcoming two new ones. So that'll be Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday, December 11th at 6:00 p.m. I smiled because I kept thinking it was a Thursday. It's Wednesday. And I believe my last slide is just, again, Happy Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be grateful for, even in all of our challenging moments, there's always a silver lining, and I think we're getting There's always a silver lining and I think we're getting, a lot of us and those that are going through so much, we're, we're turning the page, we're going, we're seeing a difference. And so I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and to remind residents that City Hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday in observance. And that concludes my report.
Well done. Thank you, Aura. Next item.
Our next item is the consent calendar. I do have one request to speak on item letter E.
That was E? Okay, I'll go ahead and move approval for all other items under, under the consent calendar.
Moved and seconded.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilman Bradley.
Yes.
Councilman Seo.
Yes.
Mayor Portemangria.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item letter E. Would you like to hear the speaker?
Sure. Does anyone need a staff report? Okay, we'll, speaker, please.
Our speaker is Larry Maislich.
Hey Larry.
Good evening, Larry.
Hey Larry.
Shocking you would want to speak on this one, Larry?
Shocking, yes.
Shocking.
Whoever's handling those signups for volunteers to deliver Thanksgiving meals, put me on the list. Good evening, Mayor Crookshank, council and staff. When this item came up for discussion last meeting, no members of the public showed up to comment, no one, zip o nada. So even though this ordinance at this point is mostly put to bed, someone had to say something on it, so I'm here to share tonight. I do a tremendous amount of walking or jogging in a number of our city neighborhoods on a daily basis, covering miles on our city streets. I'm in a unique position to comment on this issue as having been knocked off the sidewalk by e-bikes approaching from behind me on three separate occasions, with the last one might be knocked down into approaching traffic on Hawthorne Boulevard. Fortunately, the drivers on Hawthorne were able to swerve out of the way and avoid what could have been a messy, serious collision. Pedestrians on the sidewalk are moving at three miles an hour. E-bikes are moving at twenty miles an hour. Anytime a pedestrian and an e-bike are in the same place, the pedestrian always loses. Our ordinance indicates that a fourteen year old traveling at twenty miles an hour on an e-bike on the sidewalk is okay, while a fifteen year old traveling at twenty miles an hour on an e-bike on the sidewalk is not okay. The ordinance attempts to indicate that one's acceptable and the other one isn't. That is not correct. The issue isn't the rider. The issue is the twenty mile an hour vehicle on a narrow walkway with people who are moving at three miles an hour in the same narrow space. This mix does not work. A bicycle with a motor on it is a motorcycle. An e-bike is a motorcycle. We would never put a motorcycle on a sidewalk, yet essentially, this is what this ordinance is allowing. Our regulations really should be placing motorized vehicles, including e-bikes, along with the other motorized vehicles. E-bikes moving at twenty miles an hour should not be allowed on these narrow sidewalks with the three mile an hour pedestrians. Thank you, and as always, thank you council and thank you staff for your continued work for all of us residents here in the city. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Any questions of staff or commentary? Who would like to start? Yes, Councilmember Bradley.
Just a little commentary. So at the last Public Safety Committee meeting for all the cities on the Hill, we did address this and we're trying to, we directed all of our staffs to try to standardize as much as possible between the four cities as we all try to implement e-bike safety measures to make them consistent across all cities, as well as deal with the Palisverde Peninsula Unified School District and help with some education within the schools as well. So I think it's going to be pretty much a collaborative effort between Unified School District as well as the four cities. So I think it's all moving in the right direction.
Mayor Portem.
Thank you, and thanks for mentioning that, Councilmember Bradley. I appreciate Larry's comments. I think, yeah, it was one of the things I think that, that dawned upon the council as we went through this exercise. And it was mentioned in the last meeting where we discussed the proposed ordinance, that this went in front of our youth advisory committee as well. It's tricky. I, I want to acknowledge your point briefly, just to say, I, I think it is tricky, but, and Ramsey, feel free to opine, but the, the reason for the fourteen years and younger really is trying to sort of deal with the greater safety concern, which is having kids that are, you know, teenage and below, basically, who I know there are several throughout this community that are traversing our sidewalks, putting them on the streets, I don't know if that's necessarily the right answer. But I do think to Councilman Bradley's point, I think we can use the opportunity through, through the district and through this educational campaign that we're going to launch to ensure that, you know, those riders out there are well educated on, you know, safety procedures and the right way to handle pedestrians. So I think Larry's point is, is well taken. I think we'll have to look at it. I think it's one of those things where we'll implement it, assess it, and we can always modify later if needed. But I do think it's challenging to have an ordinance that's pushing children potentially on the roadway, which I think would be a greater safety concern from my perspective. So although imperfect, I think it's a great, you know, head start to improving safety in the community, particularly for the riders, which is really, I think, the genesis of the concern from the standpoint of this council. So with that, unless there's other comments, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve staff recommendation on this item.
I'll second.
I'm moved and seconded. I have a few comments, but my colleagues have. I want to speak to them.
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
So, yeah, and I too, and I think last time when we talked about the issue, my, my question or comment was, is this basically a repeat mostly of the motor vehicle code? And I think the answer was yes. I guess I would ask our, you know, our, our captain, because I, that's something that what Larry brought to me, I've seen that. I mean, I've seen young kids riding these e-bikes very quickly on the sidewalk area among pedestrians, and that seemed very dangerous. But what we're talking about here, there's a section in here that says, "No person shall operate a motorized device faster than is reasonable and proper, having due regard for weather, visibility, pedestrians, vehicular traffic, and surface and width of the road, and in no event at a speed that endangers the safety of any person or property." And I guess I would ask our captain, are, are you able to enforce if you see younger children riding fast in an endangered manner? Are you, are you now able to enforce that if you needed to?
Yes, it does assist and help us with enforcing the ordinance. But just to let everyone know that we are proactive in educating our community and working collaboratively with the PvP School District in regards to educating not just the students, but also the parents with the operation of e-bikes, the ordinances that are going to be in place. So Deputy Clotworthy, he made a pamphlet, he, it's on our social media website. So we're actually getting out there and being proactive with educating the community about e-bikes and the dangers of e-bikes and the speed. So we're doing our best to enforce the laws and ordinances, but again, without it being a state law, it's, it's a little bit difficult for us.
Got it. Thank you, Captain Guerrero. Any other further comment to the motion? All right, a roll call, please.
Councilman Seo.
Yes.
Councilman Bradley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
Yes.
Mayor Portem.
Yeah?
Yes.
Mayor Crookshank.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item number one, under regular business. Consideration and possible action on the Greater Portuguese Bend Ancient Altamira Landslide Complex. I do have three requests to speak.
All right, thank you, staff report.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to introduce this item and then I'll hand it to our Public Works Director. So this evening, what the council's going to receive is an update on the landslide remediation and winterization efforts that the council approved, funding and directed staff to proceed with those, those efforts in advance of any rain that we received. So we're going to be giving you a report in the public. And what you'll see is there, we are, we are seeing a decline in the rate of movement. I, I think many of you, without even having any of the data, many of the residents who drive Palisverde to drive south have all said, been reaching out to me saying, "I can tell there's a change in the rate of movement just by the condition of the roadway" and that we're not seeing cracks and, and the movement as we were earlier this year. So that's, that's an indication of, of deceleration. And you're going to get the specifics from our Public Works Director as well as our city geologist, Mike Phipps. You're also going to receive information, and it may sound repetitive from what I went over, but on the buyout program with some more specifics, answering some of the questions in regards to the shared costs. You know, there's that twenty five percent, seventy five percent, so we'll explain that in tonight's presentation. And, and as, as the council's indicated, whenever we bring these reports back to the council, we want to make sure we give you an update on the, the fiscal impacts of the cost that the city is bearing. I, I, I say this often, the city has been bearing the cost of all this, the successes and what we're seeing. Pretty much, we, we have, we've been covering this cost. And so I just want to be able to take a few moments with our finance director to kind of show you what our expenditures are and where we're projecting to land by the end of the fiscal year. So to that, I'm going to hand the microphone over to our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. I'll start this evening with a recap of the deep dewatering well program and then some of the immediate, immediate area impacts, and then an update on the winterization program. Now, hand it over to the city geologist, Mike Phipps, for a discussion on the broader trends within the landslide complex. So first, just a map showing the locations of the deep dewatering wells. We have installed now deep dewatering wells through number ten. You'll notice that there is DDW nine, DDW is Deep Dewatering Well, which is grayed out. That well has been decommissioned. It was in an area that was, that ended up not being as productive as hoped. And also because of land movement, it eventually sheared. The geologist advised us to drill it in a new location called DDW nine dash A, closer to the beach where it has proven to be more productive. So in total, we're up, we're now, we have ten deep dewatering wells that are extracting water and an eleventh shown there in red that is in progress. We're currently working on establishing access to install that well. So those ten total dewatering wells, this table shows you the operating start date and the pumping rates. These are approximate, they're rounded in gallons per minute, a total of eight hundred and seventy five gallons per minute across all of these. I got off the phone with the geologist earlier this afternoon and the team informed me that we have now extracted north of fifty million gallons from the landslide area, so that's a lot of water that we have extracted in a relatively shorter, short amount of time. The results here, we have been conducting a weekly GPS monitoring survey of the immediate area of the deep dewatering wells along the toe of the slide, generally along PV Drive South. And what you can see from this map is, again, in the Klondike Canyon landslide, we have consisted, I think it's four, we have consistently recorded, I think it's four or five times in a row now, zero horizontal movement. And over that same time period, I think there were a couple of blips where we had very minor vertical movement in one or two points. But generally, the Klondike Canyon landslide monitoring results show that the movement is not perceptible. And that just shows the impact of the concentrated deep dewatering wells along the toe in that area. As you can see in some of the other points, eighty, ninety percent reduction in rate of movement, going from ten, eleven inches of movement per week down to one inch, and I think that's one inch per week. And I think that speaks to what some folks have been saying about what they're seeing on PV Drive South. As we go further to, towards City Hall or to what I call the, towards the West, Sacred Cove and Abalone Cove area, the results are not as dramatic because the dewatering well program there is not as concentrated and hasn't been online for as long. But we continue to monitor those trends with, with weekly monitoring moving forward. So that's an update on the deep dewatering well program. Next is the winterization program, which is the other part of this formula, extract water and as much as possible, prevent new water from entering. We had, city council had authorized winterization program concentrated on four key locations, Altamira and Kelvin Canyon, Portuguese and Chubashin Paintbrush Canyon, Klondike Canyon and the Sea View Community. The progress in Altamira Canyon is very good. The regrading operation is complete, the lining with pond liner is complete. There will need to be ongoing regular maintenance. This, this, when I say complete, what I mean is the major construction works complete, but this will be an ongoing operation through the winter. There's some pictures that show that progress. Kelvin Canyon, the clearing work has started in anticipation of beginning the grading. And we expect the grading work to be done by Thanksgiving and the lining to be done by Christmas. Klondike Canyon, the shaping and grading is complete up to the Gabian, the Gabian Wall, which is where the trail crosses over Klondike Canyon. For those of you that are familiar with it, the lining work is getting ready to start. As you can see, the pond liner loaded on the truck there. We expect that to be complete by Thanksgiving. And after that, we will continue from the Gabian to the city limits to the extent that we can with the resources. Sea View work is also in progress. The grob in at Exaltant or the fissure at Exaltant has been repaved. And so the water now can drain from the top all the way down. We worked with property owners to accommodate driveways and other issues. So that work is complete. And the, the grob in at the intersection, we have been coordinating with the cow water team so that they can relocate their line for us to be able to continue to do that work. We'll continue that work and expect that to be complete in early December or sooner. Also, we will have a fissure filled, or fissure regraded on Admiral Well again by early to mid-December. We've identified another location that needs attention and that's on the PV Drive South Service Road. And we'll be, we're putting together a plan of attack for that, again, to target completion by mid-December or sooner. The other thing I'll say is that we are, we're watching the weather forecast every day. If there is any rain in the forecast, we do have some ideas for some interim measures that we can apply in, in key locations to minimize the impact. So far, we haven't seen anything really material, or maybe some showers this weekend, but it appears to be very limited. So in summary, we've made good progress on the winterization program and expect it to be complete except for ongoing maintenance by the, by Christmas. With that, I'll turn it over to the city geologist, Mike Phipps, for larger trends in the landslide.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. It's good to be here. I think the last time I gave you an update was October first. And we've presented some, some new graphics that are kind of striking when you, when you look at them in terms of the, the landslide movement that we've been experiencing. You know, August first was really the peak of the movement. That's what this first graph is in front of you. And, and we had things in the middle of the landslide that were moving, you know, twelve, thirteen inches a week. And that was just very devastating for the, for the neighborhoods at that time. But as you toggle through these, these graphs, which cover August, September, early October and, and late October, we see a dramatic, dramatic reduction in the rate of movement. And the last graph, October twenty eighth, you know, with the Klondike, and we're comparing readings month to month. And so the Klondike looks like it's still moving a little bit in the purple there. But all the other data we have, you know, we're doing two sets of readings. One is like a monthly set and one is a weekly set just to, to look at the dewatering impact. And the Klondike stopped moving around October thirteenth. And there might be a little bit of settling going on, a little bit of vertical movement, but that appears to have been stopped for over a month now. And that purple area wraps along the beach at Portuguese Bend, and that's where the first six deep dewatering wells were put in. That area has almost stopped moving. It's, it's less than an inch a week on a couple of the points. And so, and obviously, as Ramsey mentioned, as, as you move west, the Abalone Cove area is still moving faster. And the upper reaches of the, what we call the Altamira Complex now, that little green patch in the that little green patch in the middle at the top, you know, this area is still moving, moving faster, you know, on the order of about five inches per week right now. So the information that was in the staff report, you know, we had data through October 29th at that time. We've since gotten two more sets of readings for the 20 points that are read for dewatering impact. And, and we've seen further, generally a further slowdown. The points in Abalone Cove are now moving around 2.2 to 4.2 inches a week, and Portuguese Bend about one to three inches a week. You know, there's a couple of points that have stopped moving. So this, this program, the dewatering, and, you know, let's be, let's be honest, we also haven't had rainfall for six months, maybe a tenth of an inch. And so things are about as dry as they're going to be before we go into the rainy season here. But what we saw in the movement graphs was a, a rapid decline in the, in the movement velocities once the, the pumps started to come online. And those rates continued to decline. And, you know, they look like they've started to level off a little bit now. And so maybe we've reached sort of a steady state with, with the pumping and the amount of water that's still coming in. But, but we've reduced the, the landslide movement to, you know, something considerably slower than it was in August. And I think, you know, we're starting to see the impacts of that, especially at the toe. The rest of the landslide is, is probably going to respond with a little bit of a delay, but I expect things to start slowing down as we look further up the hill in the coming months. I'm kind of in wait and see mode as well with the, you know, all of these winterization measures, which I'm really happy that we've done what we've done and are going to be finishing here in the next month. And, you know, we'll see what happens when it starts raining, but I, I think we're going to really have done some good with, with all of these, with all of these winterization measures. Covering up those grobins where all the water is normally flowing in and, and, you know, lining portions of the canyons. This is going to have a tremendous impact on the landslide, I believe. Ramsey, do we have those other? Yeah, so we, we plotted the, this is a pretty busy graph, but this is all of the movements, all the points we're monitoring for the dewatering impact. And I, and I extended these graphs back to October of 2023 just to show you how they were all consolidated together, kind of in the half, half, half a foot per month or less. And then you can see the big blow up after the 2024 rains. The, the peaks of the graph are near July, August. And then just this super steep decline for the points, especially the, the green and the blue points. The color scheme here, the, the purple points are in the Sacred Cove area of Portuguese Bend. The green are Portuguese Bend proper. The blue are the points closest to the deep dewatering wells. And if there's any orange points up there, those are in Klondike. Let's go to the next slide. Again, another really busy graph. This is just looking at the data from, from August 1st forward. So we had movement rates along that left axis, obviously over four feet per month, and showed some of the features on the timeline in terms of when the, when the pumping of the deep dewatering wells started, which points are closest to those wells, and when some of the other wells have come online over in the Sacred Cove and Abalone Cove area. And of course, those yellow points near the bottom, those are the Klondike points that have been flatlined since October 13th, which we really like to see. Next slide. So these are just the comparison of Sacred Cove and Abalone Cove points. And you can see the decline that, that started to happen once pumping occurred. There's going to be a little less influence from the deep dewatering wells, the first six, as we move west into Sacred Cove and Abalone Cove. But we've been pumping a lot of water in Abalone Cove since these latter wells have come on, and we've got a couple more to go here. So I think we're going to see these, these curves continue to drop as those wells come online. Next slide. These are all the PBL points. And really, you can see that the, the impact is that curve drops off once the dewatering started. And you can also see the last one, two, three, maybe four sets of readings. Things are kind of leveled off now. So, you know, I'm beginning to think we're kind of at a steady state here. And I'm curious, is anybody to see what happens when it does start raining significantly? The first few rains we have, if they're light, they're not going to do much. It's really when we start getting these atmospheric river type of storms coming in, dumping the kind of rain like we saw this past year. Klondike Canyon kind of speaks for itself. It was moving over two feet per month on the, on the fastest part, and now it's not moving. That's, that's good stuff right there. Next slide. So we've also been looking at, some of the data have, have been coming in, excuse me, from Rolling Hills. I think we stated in the staff report that, excuse me, losing my voice. We stated in the staff report that we had not received the Rolling Hills data, but I got it literally the day after the report was published. So we created this figure to show kind of what's going on up there, and we're still evaluating whether there's a, a direct link or a structural relationship between the movement up there and the movement down below. And right now, I will tell you that I'm still not sure. And the reason is that we've had all this major movement down in the lower left-hand corner of this picture, which is kind of at the head of the Portuguese Bend, Altamira landslide movement at Burma Road. And we had this zone of the, of the, of the Burma Road switchback, big S-turn in the, in the road. That area started creeping, really June, July, August, it was moving about half inch per week. And that movement has now ceased. And what's really bothering me is, is if these things were connected, you know, if it's just movement coming in behind the movement down in, in the Altamira landslide. These points along Burma Road, there's four of them, they should be moving, and they're not. I even have a point down slope of the area that's moving up in Rolling Hills that was installed a few months ago, and it is not moving. And so we're still evaluating this and trying to understand, is this a connection or is it not? And I believe there's some, maybe some geological reasons that would identify this is a separate landslide mass that's possibly, you know, moving at a different rate and not necessarily moving in response to what's happening down below. But we're, we're going to continue to evaluate this and report back to you. The other odd thing that happened was, you know, the movement data that we got was through October 29th. And a number of these points in the Burma Road area had actually stopped moving, or they were below the, the instrument error, showing a tiny bit of movement. And then the, the waterline break happened up on Burma, identified and blew up there on November 2nd or 3rd, right after the data said that things had stopped moving. So it, it may be creeping a little bit, but that area had moved over a period of three, four months and probably stressed that line to the point that it, it started leaking and broke. So that's about all I have to report tonight. I think it's really good news. I think this program of deep dewatering wells has been, has been very effective. The wells have lasted longer than, than I anticipated they would. And the additional wells we bring online are going to be very, very helpful, I believe. And really, the test will be what happens when we start raining.
Thank you, Mike and Ramsey. Is there more staff report or time for questions?
It's at your, your pleasure. We do have more to report. I, I think the community development director has a report on the buyout program, and then Vina has a report on the finance.
Why don't, I'm sure we have a bunch of technical questions for both Ramsey and Mike. Why don't we stop this, that, and we'll have some questions from council, and then we'll proceed with the others. I know Councilmember Bradley has numerous questions, please.
I know. Mike or Ramsey, I'm not sure which one. I know we said that deep dewatering well number nine sheared off, and it was of low production before it sheared off. How much were we producing out of nine? I don't think that was in the.
I think, I'll look it up as I speak to, I, I think it was 20.
That was 20 or less.
Okay, so significantly below what the other ones are. And then I know we were expecting a lot more horizontal movement for the deep dewatering wells. I know they haven't sheared off, but are we seeing lateral movement where it's constricting? Or have we had to re-bore out any of the other 10 holes to date?
There, there was one that had very minimal, but none reported really in the others. Mike, you haven't had reports of any of the others more recent than I have?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I mean, we, we're trying to understand why this happened. You know, the points on the beach, I think that the, the landslide debris is, it's different than it is over in Abalone Cove. And I think that these wells all came online, especially the five on the beach came online very quickly, and had an immediate effect on the surrounding area. And I think it slowed the movement to the point where we, we got ahead of it. And that doesn't mean, you know, the area behind is still coming in and trying to push on this, but, you know, these, these wells are lasting way beyond my imagination.
You know, one of those good news stories, but you kind of scratch your head and wonder, whoa, why?
Yeah.
So I guess it's better to wonder why a good news story than why a bad news story. So, okay, those were my questions.
Councilmember, just a correction, that well, nine actually started at about 40, but then pretty quickly dropped to 20.
But still about an order of magnitude less production than most of the other wells that we have, the deep dewatering wells.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Sale. I think more of this question is for Ramsey. Just for the public certification, I know we have a concentration of wells by Klondike Canyon, Sea View, and that area. Are there any more plans to build out and bore in Abalone Cove and have more deep dewatering wells past 10?
What's currently shown on this map is the, is what is authorized by the council at this time and funded by the council at this time.
Just wanted to make sure that people understand why. Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mike, thanks for your guidance throughout this whole process. Just one quick question. You know, I anticipate the, the new council will really have to grapple with this, but as you sort of reflect on the investments that have been made thus far, and then you sort of try to project forward, especially with all this data we have, do we, you know, are we starting to build what that sort of ideal plan in terms of water prevention plus water removal looks like? And maybe it's a Ramsey question. And if so, what do we think the timing of that is? You know, just contrasting kind of a gap analysis of what we have versus, you know, what we're learning and what we think we're going to need long-term to maintain as much control of this landslide as, as possible.
Yeah, I can start the response to that question. Also, we have on the Zoom with us today Gary Lass and Bill McCormick with Geologic, and they're the lead geologists for this project, so they can speak to it as well. One of the questions you asked in a previous council meeting that I commented on in the staff report is how much rain compared to the dewatering capacity? And that's a really difficult question to answer until we collect data, rainfall data, and measure the water pressure increase and, and look at that relationship. But in general, just in terms of the big picture, based on what we've seen to date with the dewatering well program, I think the ultimate build out, what that looks like, is a band along the toe of the slide, and then another band that's further up. And that, that will require significant coordination and cooperation with ACLAD and KCLAD. They're, they're a big part of that. And then ultimately, high, high dragger is coming in as interceptors and to fill the gaps even further up. So I think that's what the big picture looks like long-term. The exact numbers, I think we need more data to, to better understand whether that's, you know, a certain number or another. And I'll, and I'll turn it over to Gary or Bill if they have any additional comments.
This is Bill McCormick. Yeah, so it's a, it's a multi-phase approach. What we're really leaning on here is that we've proven the fact that relatively closely spaced wells have a dramatic effect. That was shown by the first six. And so like Ramsey's saying, what really should be done as quickly as possible is to finish off a similar array connecting Abalone Cove to the eastern part of Portuguese Bend, so we can get Sacred Cove and, and areas like that, which have residential properties directly above. So we can have the same effect at the toe. And then once, once we get that, once we get that completed and we continue to collect data on the effectiveness on the dewatering, and then we can finalize a secondary phase of rows of dewatering wells higher up in the slide to get the water sooner. And that way, by having multiple rows, we can stop, hopefully stop the top, which would stop the middle, you know, so we have top and bottom, and the middle would have nowhere to go. So that's kind of the, the, the next phases, which, you know, we'd like to see the wells on the base be done as soon as practical. The other rows probably would have to be something in the new year and spring or something. And during that time also, we'll be able to analyze what rainfall has effect and what, what we can continue to pump out of these wells. With that, we'll also be able to tell whether well spacing needs to be closer together, or currently, we've done a series 250 feet apart, like which, of course, again, has been very successful. So it's just key to take this one step at a time. We know a section works. We're pretty sure it's going to work in Abalone Cove once they get the wells finished there and pumped for a bit. But putting the other ones in, I think we'll see the same effect everywhere we go with these dewatering wells.
Thanks, Bill, and Ramsey, that's helpful. I recognize I'm asking a question slightly premature, but I, I think it's important for us to set a direction, to say we really want to look at this in an incremental way, as we talked about it in the last meeting, and really think about this as in phases of investment into, you know, interventions to try to, try to get a handle on it. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Ferrara.
Since, since we're not having the, the wells shear off like we thought originally they were going to, and they're working a lot longer than we had originally thought, are we saving any money from the original amount that we thought we were going to have to spend?
We are saving some money on the re-drilling, but we're also investing quite a bit in the operating costs, particularly without having power, electric power through generators, et cetera. So we're still running the numbers. We, we have saved some money, but there are some parts where the estimates, some parts where the estimates are a little bit more, and some parts where the estimates are a little bit less.
Thank you.
Back in the 50s, when they were starting to cut the road down, it seems like you're building the original road with some of the lining of the canyons. Pretty amazing stuff there. So in regards to the mapping, or kind of getting into what Mayor Potem was asking, what, what is the process for, for modeling or kind of understanding? Not, not getting into crazy amount of weeds, but just in general, you're able to kind of create a model and, and understand where these wells will potentially work the best? Could you give me a flavor of how that works?
Yeah, I'll try to give just a big picture overview, and then Bill can, can comment further. Essentially, it starts with the test bore holes. And what that means is drilling in the ground to a depth where we think the slide place or slip plane is based on historical studies dating 20, 40, 50, 60 years back. That gives us very useful information on the direction of the slide, the angle of the slide, the depth of the slide. We try to take several points so that we can tie it together into a cross-section essentially that helps us understand what this looks like underground, as well as the materials. And we insert instruments that measure the water pressure. All that information helps us identify the most likely locations for the best production wells and the best ability to extract the wells. And I'll also note that that information can be used by the districts. And I'll also note that that information can be used by the districts. That information is very, very valuable to A-CLAD and K-CLAD as they look to site additional wells. So that's sort of the big picture. Did that, did I answer in enough detail or was it too broad?
No, that's what I wanted to understand. And I know we were talking about Rolling Hills a bit and, and, you know, I'm sure that they're watching these meetings and listening to what we're doing. I know we're lining these canyons all the way potentially up to the city limits, I guess. Is there an, is there an opportunity for us to continue to work with them in terms of them getting a pipe to us and to where we're doing our lining and, and that? Or would that make sense or?
I, I think the biggest opportunity, as directed by the city council, we have put out a request for proposals for wide area drainage, that's what I call a source drainage study, where the water originates, how it gets into this landslide. Biggest part of that process, it could be very helpful to have Rolling Hills at the table with us, providing us information on their infrastructure and their drainage and working with us to optimize that so that it doesn't contribute.
Okay, Ara.
Yeah, no, keep, keep in mind Klondike Canyon is, begins in the city of Rolling Hills and terminates in RPV. We're doing our work up to the boundary line. We can't cross over the boundary line. So water entering from the top of the watershed could, if it's, if, if that canyon's fissure, that water can still get into the ground. So yes, there's a huge benefit to getting Rolling Hills to come to the table and complete the, the winterization on their end of the city.
Okay, that's great. And hopefully they're listening and going to plan on doing that. Okay, very good. Are there any further technical questions of that team? Okay, please proceed. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to our CDD Director.
Yes, good evening. I'll be reporting on the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This is the voluntary buyout program in the landslide complex. This, this property acquisition demolition program is expected to be funded by FEMA for $42 million. The city accepted applications from property owners through November 8. What do we need? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sharing the whole, okay, got it. There we go. This property acquisition demolition program, we accepted applications from property owners through November 8. As Ara mentioned in his city manager report, a total of 85 applications were received. Many of the properties were inspected by the building official and those were done on a voluntary basis. Of those, 20 were red-tagged, 37 were yellow-tagged. Red-tagged means that they cannot occupy the structure. Yellow-tagged means that they may be able to occupy a portion of it or have things stored there and be able to go in and out. And then the remaining 28 were either in good condition, that green evaluation status, or the property owners just chose not to request an inspection. As for the eligibility, the property cannot be bank-owned through, basically through a foreclosure or other similar means. The property could not be, have been sold since December 1st of 2022. The property must be improved with legally permitted structures and applicants must be the legal owners of the improved structures. And those are things that we'll be evaluating throughout the, the initial process. For prioritization, this was in the, the guidelines, but just to quickly go over that, the top priority are structures that have been red-tagged, properties that have been yellow-tagged, those that may be in imminent jeopardy of becoming red or yellow-tagged due to their close proximity to the land movement, properties that have been de-energized indefinitely, those that might benefit the city's land stabilization and winterization efforts, and then those that might contribute to the overall value of the adjacent Palisades Nature Preserve. For FEMA's grant funding, they'll pay 75% of the total fair market value as established on December 1st of 2022. That's before the atmospheric rivers that we experienced in 2023 and 2024 started to occur. The total fair market value includes the following eligible costs. So it includes A through I. So it's that property value. What's, what's the house worth, the, the house and property worth? The appraisal costs, the title search costs, the lot survey costs, real estate transaction fees, closing costs, demolition costs, the lead paint asbestos abatement, and then the site restoration. So all of those are included in the, the total costs, eligible costs, and FEMA will pay 75% of that. The other 25% will come from the property owner. Now, coming from the property owner, you're seeing a lot of those things are upfront costs. They're, the property owner is not going to be expected to pay them upfront. It'll be deducted then from the, the value of the, the property. So just going through a hypothetical case, we've had a lot of questions, so I just want to go through this for, for the public. Assuming that there's a property that's a valuation of $3.5 million, the eligible costs that, that A, that property value with the improvements is that $3.5 million. FEMA's share of that, the 75%, is $2,625,000. The property owner's share, what they, would be the $875,000. That's basically what they would have reduced off of the $3 and, $3.5 million. The eligible costs B through I, those are not the value of the property, but the, all those, the acquisition, the costs that would come with this. We estimate those to be approximately $180,000 for a property of, of this value. The FEMA share of that would be 75%, then the property owner's share will be 45, 45,000. So the property owner's share of those eligible costs B through I will then be reduced from the value of the property in addition to the, the 25% that they'll have reduced from the $3.5 million. So of, of the, the value of the property. So the homeowner's share of all eligible costs A through I is $920,000. The homeowner will receive 250, excuse me, $2,580,000 at closing. That's that 75% of the valuation of the property minus their 45,000, their 25% share of those eligible costs B through I. So they would, would receive the $2,580,000. So that's just explaining how it's not just, oh, there's only going to be this, this, they're going to get the 75% of the valuation. There is an additional reduction that will come as a result of those additional costs, those eligible costs. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Vina unless you have any questions.
We have questions. Councilmember Bradley.
Yeah. So Brandy, just to make it clear, so even the additional costs, FEMA, the grant, will be picking up 75 cents on the dollar for every one of those additional costs. So even though there are additional costs, we're still doing a 75-25 split line to help the residents as much as possible.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess another question I always get in regards to homes that aren't covered by this current FEMA buyout program, can, can you explain if there would be potential future buyout monies from FEMA and how that would work?
Certainly. So the, the grant, this FEMA grant is through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And as we mentioned, that grant gets funded whenever there is a federally declared disaster in a state. Certain amount of money goes for remediation mitigation efforts. The, the money for this 42 million is coming from the winter storms from January 31st to February 9th. There, for the wildfires that occurred this year, the president may be declaring a federal disaster. So there may be three of additional cycles where hazard mitigation grant funds will become available. However, I'm being told that pot of money is going to be significantly less than what the state received for the winter storms. So there is that opportunity. I think there will be in, in the weeks to come. We will learn about cycles two, three, and possibly four. That'll be available for the properties that are not eligible for this year. In addition to that, I was also informed recently that the city could also apply for a brick grant, which is the Building Resiliency Infrastructure Community Grant, where we applied for it a couple of years ago for our hydrogras project. The brick grant is also a, a path that we can take to receive additional funding for the buyout program. So we have a lot of options. I think there's more opportunities. So if someone is not eligible this cycle, cycle, additional cycles will, will likely be open, but it may only be for two, three homes as opposed to 20.
And I know our friend Councilmember Seo was up in Washington. Do you, do you have anything to add or want to?
No, I was just going to say, just to clarify that point, Ara, for the, I guess the next cycles, the money's going to fluctuate because it's not a fixed 42 million every cycle. So it could be, it could fluctuate between, I don't know, even $1 as opposed to anything else. I know that's a silly amount, but I'm just saying the fluctuation amount, we don't know how much money's coming down the pipeline in each cycle, right?
Correct. And, and that's why this, the next cycle can only, may only, may only be enough to buy two or three homes.
All right. Vina.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My report tonight is the updated financial report for the Portuguese Bend landslide. Okay, this slide here probably looks familiar. This was presented to you on October 1st. This is an estimate of almost three years' worth of expenditures for the landslide. This is from October 2022, and we estimate to end the year at June 2025. So for almost three years, our estimate is about $43.6 million. And of that $43.6 million, about $31.9 or approximately $32 million of that amount is only in fiscal year 2425. Year-to-date, NPOs issued for this fiscal year's budget is $16.5 million. And some, some of the details here on your, on the slide here. So on October 1st, you approve $4 million for, for winterization. You also approved that same night, the additional deep dewatering well for $4 million. The next one there at $11.3 million, this was the original hydrogras project, which is now the bore holes and the deep dewatering wells. We are estimating for that line item to end the year at $11.3 million. Road repairs, these are mainly PV drive south for almost three years. It'll end the year at $7.3 million. The allocation for personal costs is approximately $3.9 million. Also for additional professional technical and the share of services for three years is about $2.5 million. We also continue to have some Abalone Cove sewer repairs for three year, almost three years. We estimate that to be at $2.1 million. We are also doing some fissure filling, $1.8 million. And we have about $400,000 for legal services. And on the green ones here, we also earmarked $3.5 million for A-CLAD and K-CLAD loans. Similarly, on October 1st, these loans have not been issued yet. We are still working with the district as far as their requirements before we issue those loans. We also continue to have some expenditures on the PBL. This is the Portuguese Bend landslide remediation at $1.6 million. And also tax assessment for the last three years at $1.1 million. So the next slide here focuses on fiscal year 2425 budget only. I wanted to give you a breakdown of the funding sources. So in fiscal year 2425 of the $32 million, $25 million is from city funds. And the breakdown here is from $10.1 million from CIP fund. $5 million was approved again on October 1st to use some of our $5 million reserves, $3.5 million from general fund. And also on October 1st, you approved $6.4 million from our general fund excess reserves. The remaining $7 million funds, $2.2 is from Supervised Rehan's social program. And as if you recall, this was a $5 million grant and $2.8 was allocated for a $10,000 grant. We have issued to date about $2.1 million for those grants and I believe 207 applications. And so we continue for that program. Again, $2.2 is then allocated for landslide. $3.4 is from special revenue funds, which is ARPA, and then also $1.4 million from Metro Funds. An update here on the fund balance and reserves for general fund. As I reported on October 1st, our estimated balance is about $35 million for general fund. $16 million of that is, is, is the city council reserve. You also approve, the $6.4 million are allocated now for landslide. So that, the remaining balance for excess reserves is $12.9 million. That chart there on the right side just shows where we were in '23, '24, and then at the end of fiscal year 2425, once we used the $6.4, we would have that balance at $12.9 for excess reserves. An update on CIP fund. As I reported on October 1st, we have a $33 million fund balance there. $5 million was approved for the landslide. On the right side there is, is the same chart we had on October 1st. I do want to say that the five-year capital program is still funded and you only approved $5 million from reserves, so that there are no changes on the, a five-year capital plan. And then finally, as Brandy mentioned earlier, this is just a big picture of the property buyout program. So the way we're looking at this grant program is a $56 million. The way FEMA calculates 75%, that's how they came up with the $42 million out of that $56 million. Overall, property owner, as far as the split, it's approximately $24.5 or $13.7 million. Those are the match that Brandy went over earlier. And the city has, would estimate about $330,000 of in-kind services or less than 1%. How that affects the city's financials. And this is currently the city's net position at $235 million. Once these acquisitions are finalized, and it depends on which fiscal year it hits the city, we estimate for these acquisitions to impact the city's net position under, by increasing the land under capital assets. And that concludes my financial report. Thank you.
You're going to have questions. Mayor Protem Allegria.
Just a quick question. Thank you for that report. It was thorough and I think it gives the public a good understanding of, of some of these large numbers. I know we talked, or in the prior presentation about the applications that we had out there related to the emergency declaration. Is there any new information about, you know, any, I know we weren't terribly optimistic during the last report, but any new optimism on any aspect of some of our spend up to, you know, recent date that we're going to see reimbursement for?
We are actually still at $1.5 million from the $68 million that we applied for. And they're mainly for, from the energy station and also from the regional winter storm. And they're mainly for parks and open space, not related to the landslide area.
Have we gotten any more feedback that, any other aspect of that? Maybe? No, not at this time.
No, Mayor Protem. We are, we, we put in our request for cost recovery from this winter storms. We, and same with the districts, we have not received, what we've been told verbally is a denial of our requests. We're waiting for that letter and then we will appeal that decision. The appealed decision will be heard by the FEMA's administrator for, for Area 9. And then that decision will be appealed to headquarters of FEMA in DC. So we haven't heard, we haven't even received that first letter yet.
Okay, thank you very much.
That looks like no further questions. Thank you, Vina. Is that the?
And that is the end of the report.
Okay, very good. If we can hear from the, we've got three speakers, I think. Yeah. Hear from the public, please.
Certainly. Our first speaker is Jeff Basler.
Hi, Jeff.
Good evening. Hello. Jeff Basler. I am on the State Board of Bata California Motorcycle Rights, Rider Rights Organization and President of Bata Local 19. I have the baling wire this time to be able to share with you all. I am really pleased with the information I heard tonight. It's been probably the first real positive information that I've heard that is foundational rather than hopeful. And so that, that gives me hope coming into next month with the end of the six-month period on the ban of motorcycles and bicycles on Rancho Palos Verdes Drive. With the condition getting better, I am hoping that we might be able to move to a situation where all vehicles are encouraged to go slow and extra caution for two-wheeled vehicles as opposed to the ban that currently stands. And thanks for staying on top of this. And one disappointment was I was expecting to hear a report on that. You said with the slide reports, you would offer a road condition report with respect to the motorcycles, and there was nothing to that effect.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Do you want to provide a quick update on the road? I think you did a little bit.
We, we are still assessing the situation. I mean, when I said earlier in my remarks, I mean, you can tell PV Drive South isn't experiencing the stress that it was earlier this year. And based on what you've heard this evening, the, when you break the landslide, the eastern portion over by the Seaview is showing no movement as, as our city geologist reported, but we're still experiencing movement on the west side. And so we continue to monitor the condition of the roadway. The 60-day, or the six-month prohibition of motorcycles and two-wheel devices will be on the December 17th agenda. I know I had mentioned that we would cover it. We didn't have enough information to put in tonight's staff report. We will bring it back by December 17th. At this point, we're still not sure whether we will lift that prohibition. If anything, we may extend it for a few more months while we see what happens if, during winter, and if we have any rain events.
Okay, got it. And next speaker.
Is via Zoom Eva Albuja.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and all the City Council. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Eva. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I just wanted to reconfirm and ask the question if that was true that approximately about 10 days ago, SCE was putting up a post in front of one of the homes in Seaview Track, and it was stopped from being put up, and SCE was told not to put the post up due to one of the neighbors not being happy that the post was going up in front of his home. I just want to remind and ask, is that true, and why did that happen? There is still 30 homes, give or take, in the Seaview Track that needs electric, my home including. I have no lights, even though there's lights across the street. I don't understand why the post was, was stopped. Again, I'm urging you guys to get, you know, together with SEC, get the posts up, get electrical to us. It's a hardship for us, and we need lights. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, and I think I'll ask Ara to give us an update on that as well.
May I respond? Because that wasn't an accurate assessment. SCE was not, to repeat, not installing a post. They were knocking on doors, asking residents in a certain area if they would be willing to sign an easement to allow SCE to install posts. We were, Ramsey and I were both contacted by almost a dozen residents saying, what is happening? When did this get proposed? Why are they putting the poles in the front, not in the back? We immediately, or in the back of the properties where the posts are currently, we immediately reached out to SCE because that, we were unaware that they were actually even proceeding with that, that concept, and asked them to stop knocking on doors, to meet with us first, to propose to staff what they're planning on doing for their re-energization before they start knocking on doors, so that we can work with them and find the appropriate path forward in terms of what we think is the ideal solution to re-energizing the neighborhood. So they were not putting a post up. They were looking for easements or just asking if they would be willing to sign, not even having them sign easement, just trying to find out where, where the residents would land on that, so.
And thank you for asking that question in regards to a meeting for re-energization. Is there something on the calendar at this point?
We are meeting with Southern California Gas and Southern California Edison every, almost every other week, which is just the city, Ramsey and myself. But we also have every week a call with LA County through their Office of Emergency Management, and then there's our working group meetings. We are scheduled, we, SCE canceled our meeting last week, so we're scheduled to meet with them on Thursday, this Thursday. We continue, the city continues to press both utilities, including Cox Communication, to restore the utilities in light of all the data that we've collected since September, especially in the Beach Club and Seaview neighborhoods. They are, they're interested in looking at the data. They're collecting their own data. In fact, I, I think there was, there was a post that was published last week by a resident on social media about a temporary flight restriction over the city, and that really stemmed from FEMA's, not FEMA's, SCE's request, because they're actually doing some of their own LiDAR studies to look at, to verify the data based on what we've presented. They're, they're doing their own testing. So we're hoping, without making any promises to the community, because we keep pressing, but we're hoping that they will consider restoring area by area, even if it's just a few houses at a time, because they did restore power to 16 properties in the Portuguese Bend Community Association over by the, the west, the west portion of that neighborhood.
Thank you, Ara. Next speaker.
Is Michael Seidner, also via Zoom.
Hello. See, you can my video. First of all, thank, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. You got my last name right. Most people don't get that right. Mayor, councilmembers, everyone, thank you very much. Keep it short and sweet. It's also about two-wheeled vehicles on PV Drive South. I've been a resident and been riding that both on bicycles and motorcycles, doing the drives ride for 15 years. And I just want to implore you to remove the prohibition. I have inspected the road this week as of yesterday, and fairly recently before that, and I know last week they were working on the stretch in Portuguese Bend. And it is safer now than it was before the prohibition even started. And not only that, it's, it's crucial route, crucial to hundreds of riders a week. And the alternatives, the detours are way more dangerous than allowing people to ride through the bumpy part of PV Drive South, Portuguese Bend. Hawthorne is not a good option. Going out to Western is not a good option, so just really encourage, you know, I don't think there's enough cyclists speaking up, but it's, it's a crucial route for recreation, mental health, that needs to be reopened. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike.
No further speakers, Mayor.
All right. Discussion. Who'd like to start? I could start this time. Usually I wait. No, I mean, I, I think that part of the discussion needs to be, I know we had talked about thresholds in regards to Edison and the gas company, and I guess Cox Communication as well. I know we haven't heard that information yet, but you could see based on what's happened is that there's areas that are now so improved that there's zero movement in some of these areas. And it, I mean, I always tell people, if I lose my power for an hour, I get angry. Imagine losing your power for two, three months. It's ridiculous. We should be doing, we should be fighting more. I guess I, at this point, I feel like there should be no excuse for some of these areas to be re-energized and the gas turn back on. And then I guess if, if the case is gonna be that they're just gonna drag their heels and do mapping and look at alternatives, because we had expected them to have new plans to re-energize these areas by this time, and we still haven't seen it. And they always talk about reassessing it, but to me, I think there's options out there. Like when we reached out to Tesla Energy, and they got back to us within three days, and then within a week and a half, I was meeting with them, and then they've come and presented to us some of the ideas of getting homes off-grid. Now, I know off-grid is certainly much harder than it sounds, and they said the same thing to us. And I'm gonna be off the council in a few weeks, but I think there's still opportunities, though, for our city to start looking at off-grid technologies. I mean, I think there's financial models where the city is taking over that power. People are off-grid, and those monies can then be backstopped to use to pay for dewatering and that. So I guess that, that might be something. I don't know, Ara, if there's, I know you were part of that presentation with Participate Energy and the Tesla Energy folks, and and they kind of brought forward some ideas, and Councilmember Bradley was in the meeting as well as part of our landslide subcommittee, but is that a viable option? Like, is there, you know, I, I think we might want to start looking at how maybe our city starts to have its own off-grid, and not just in the landslide area, but the whole city, and maybe the whole peninsula. I mean, if Edison is gonna ignore us, I think we should find our way. I mean, that's kind of the peninsula way, is doing things on our own, and and I don't know, I feel like there, there should be a movement toward that. I mean, resilience is so important. This could happen in another neighborhood as well. I, and they continue to say they're an overhead power company. Okay, that's what they are. But I think the people in Portuguese Bend need something beyond an overhead power line company. And, and so I wonder how we could potentially keep that dialogue going to move that. Ara, I don't know if you have a few thoughts in regards to that.
Sure, and I was part of that discussion, as you mentioned. I, I think that is looking at off-grid solutions and trying to find some financial models that is more long-term, because what we need to do is go in front of the Finance Advisory Committee, get some input on, on how it looks to front some of the funding and being a partner as part of this. So that's, for, for an immediate solution, that, that I, I want to steer the public and not give them false expectations. I think it's gonna take some time. In fact, when you drive through many of these neighborhoods, especially the Beach Club and the Community Association, many residents have already gone off-grid. And I know in some of the conversations I've had at the dinners, they're like, well, we, we don't need SCE to come back. We've, we've already addressed and found an alternative. I, I should also say, in the defense of some of the utilities, particularly Southern California Gas, they, they're very interested in restoring gas to these properties. And they, they are collecting their own data and studying our data, but they've also expressed to us that they can't go in and immediately turn the gas back on, because it's been a few months and we've had movement. They need to go inspect all the infrastructure, and I think SCE shares that same opinion. And that's why we're, we're hoping they can do it with small grids at a time to restore. So we're continuing to press that. We want to see the power turn on. I think you heard in Ramsey's presentation, the cost that we're, we thought we were saving from not having the dewatering wells shear off, we're actually ending up spending it to energize our dewatering wells. Those dewatering wells can't operate without some sort of generator. If that generator runs out of fuel, and we're paying a lot of money for the fuel, I mean, the same goes to A-Clad. We're trying to work with A-Clad to get their wells up and running. They need to get power to their wells as well. So we, we, we have a vested interest in this as well.
And I think what's interesting, there was a proposal that came to us for the city of Inglewood, where they're using their water system that they bring in water to generate electricity. And we have an amount of water we're pumping out that's just going right out to the ocean. I wonder if there's technologies to actually create energy to then use for the pumps. So I, I guess the point is that there seems like a lot of good opportunities, a lot of things that we've learned over the last several months in regards to renewable energies, and learn more about our utility companies. And I, I guess, yes, they haven't turned things back on, but I'm hoping that they're not just sitting to wait for some magic moment, but actually going to these homes now and starting to do the inspections to see, like you said, neighborhood by neighborhood, to make sure that when they say it's time to turn it back on, that they don't have a bunch of excuses of, oh, well, these wiring's all bad, and the meters are gone, and blah, blah, blah. They should be doing that now and getting ready to turn things back on for people. I guess some people don't necessarily need the power, but I think they still do as a backstop, even if they do have solar and batteries. I think all the homes are gonna eventually be able to need electricity again because of the potential, you can't just generate enough electricity for all their needs. I'm sure they're having to sacrifice things. So I guess that's the, the first thing. So I'm hoping that the city can come back and have some definitives, meet with the utility companies soon, and find out what those baselines is to where they'll say, yes, we will turn things back on, because some areas aren't moving at all. And so that seems like the right, you, you can't stop moving any more than that. It's not moving. So there should, there should be power back on those areas. There should be no excuses. And so don't, you're right, don't do necessarily everything, but at least start neighborhood or, you know, a few houses here and there, but let's get things going. This is a big deal for those people out there. The other thing is, I think the Mayor Protem mentioned in regards to federal cost recovery. I think you want to, I know you're pressing, and I know you keep asking about that. And I think we want to continue to move ahead with trying to get recovery for all the monies that the city has put forth. And then also, Vina, I know that, and just wanted to confirm, I know that both our landslide abatement districts, you said they haven't been funded yet, but they are getting funded. It's not necessarily stopping their project. Is, is everything fine? There's no hiccups? It's just, that's just more you're reporting it to us.
Correct. They are still working on the documentation to get their reimbursement. But as far as deep dewatering wells, I believe that work is still continuing, and Ramsey can probably provide more details on that.
Yeah, we've been, city's been coordinating very closely with K-Clad on their dewatering operations. We've been sharing information as well as on the winterization and drainage. And we have what I think is a solid plan for what the city can do and what the district can do, specifically K-Clad, to connect the dots for the winterization and drainage. With, with A-Clad, we've also had significant discussions on winterization. We're still waiting for their dewatering well plans, and we're not looking for a lot of bureaucracy and documentation. We just want to know what's the plan, have our geologists look at it and say, yep, that makes sense. That's along the lines of what we would think you would do and move forward that way. So we're not trying to hold this up with bureaucracy and documentation.
Okay, no, I, I didn't think so. And, and my final thought is the staff have done a tremendous job throughout the last couple of years. I can't thank you enough. I mean, it's, this problem is so complex and never been solved before, and you guys were able to all work together so well. And I, I'm sure I speak for all my colleagues here that you guys have done an amazing job, so thank you for everything you've done to this point. Other comments? Yes, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, is, I think as many of you know, this is the last formal meeting for the, for the mayor and I, and I'm very pleased, at least, that this gets to be at least a hopeful, you know, report as it relates to the landslide. It's been really challenging, but I thought I would just briefly pause as the mayor sort of ended with his concluding remarks and say, a big thank you, and just look at how far we've come. It doesn't mean we're there, but at least, at least there's so much more reason to be optimistic, so much more progress that's been made, so much more of a deeper understanding that we have. But we're not out of the woods yet, and as, as, you know, the public spoke tonight, it's, you know, a stark reminder that people are still without certain utilities and still in the dark, and some of them have been, as was mentioned, for several months. So let's, you know, one, I want to just briefly pause and say a sincere thank you on my behalf, as well as the mayor's, to all involved, especially staff for all the work that you've done. I know this has consumed much of your lives for, frankly, for a couple of years, and you've given freely of yourself your time and your talents to, to improve the situation for our residents. So I appreciate that, and I just want you to know how much, we, we really appreciate that work. It's all about returning to normalcy now, as much as possible. As was noted, you know, the landslide at least is settling thanks to a lot of investment, a lot of intervention, and of course, a little a lot of intervention, and of course, a little bit of cooperation from Mother Nature. You know, I do think the former mayor, Knight, had a good suggestion. I know it's happening, so I know everyone on this council's been talking to utilities. But I do think, and I'll throw it out there, perhaps for Councilman Seo or Councilman Bradley to consider, but perhaps it's time to put a formal subcommittee together now to really push the program in terms of phasing utilities. I think that public pressure, that public policy pressure could be helpful at this time. But I do think that's probably the very next thing. You've heard me talk a lot about long-term planning. I still think we, you know, this... Everything we've done is sort of short-term. Let's just put some Band-Aids on and, in some cases, some better solutions. But I don't think we've settled into our long-term programming yet. And so, as is mentioned by Mike and others this evening, I think once we get into the spring, we'll be able to look at everything we've learned and probably develop what will hopefully become long-term plan for the city to deal with maintenance aspect of, you know, managing the landslide going forward, especially in those years where that rainfall, you know, index increases quite a bit. And then just a last thing, I do want to acknowledge the folks that spoke about the two, you know, bikes and motorcycles and say, "I agree." And at least, you know, as you know, I live right around the corner. I drive past and over that area multiple times a day, and I was just reporting to the city manager today, "Hey, I can actually almost go the speed limit for most of, you know, most of the... that area now." So I do think it's, you know, an opportunity now, in the next month, as we look at that six-month expiring, to consider. And I would certainly encourage the future council to consider, you know, encouraging safety, but removing the ban on the two wheels at that time. With that, I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Seo.
I'm going to make a motion.
Do you want to make comments, please?
A quick comment.
Please.
Quick question, actually. Ramsey, have we exhausted our funds for deep dewatering wells, the ones that we allocated already?
By the time we install DDW 11 and account for some ongoing maintenance and operations power, et cetera, we will exhaust the funds.
Okay, and that's the stuff that we already allocated, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just to address, and just with my comments for this, just so the public knows on exactly what the city council is doing and what we're trying to do behind the scenes in regards to lobbying and funding. I just got back from a trip to DC asking appropriations to try to give us $81 million. Now, I don't want folks to think that we're going to receive it. It's a request that we made, and hopefully we get it, or there's some type of carve-out going forward from either FEMA or through some type of supplemental bill. But everybody's racing right now to try to get those funds. In December, we're also going up, in December and January, and I know other city council members, like Dave Bradley and I, are going to go up to Sacramento again to lobby to try to carve out money from the state. So that being said, we're still working on trying to get funding so that we can actually accomplish the goals that we have. And I just want to, you know, commend the staff for working super hard to make sure that we get the things that we need. I know that Mayor Pro Temp has patted all of us on the back and said that we're doing a great job, and I just want to be on the opposite end of that. I just don't want us to lose focus in terms of keeping our foot on the accelerator to solve the issue that we have at hand, because right now, we have the left portion of the landslide still moving at a continuous rate that's pretty high. So let's try to make sure that we focus, and if we can, even if we have to allocate funds to that area from somewhere else, I don't know if we can pull funds from whatever's allocated already to try to make sure we get more deep dewatering wells down and boreholes drilled. So let's take a look at where we're spending money and where we can cost save to do that, because I think that's the stuff that's actually making us money now in terms of the results that we want, because ultimately, if we don't get power and gas back in our area, all of our efforts are nil. So let's just stay focused in regards to what we're doing. And in terms of SCE and gas, I know they're probably going to listen to this, but I know, speaking with SCE at least, they went from stabilization and consistency from months to weeks, so hopefully we can keep them to their word in regards to that. And let's push them with their results to match it up with ours, because I know they're doing their independent reviews and studies and whatnot, but I want to make sure that they're not sitting on that and they actually progress and give us some type of timeline in regards to how they're going to do the energy station. And also, the second piece of that with SCE is I want to make sure that we emphasize the communication part, because I think for SCE at least, and I'm going to say it a little bit harsh, they haven't been communicating very well with our neighbors. And you guys shouldn't be getting calls by a dozen of, you know, neighbors in Seaview saying that work's being done without us knowing, so that we can give them a heads-up and make sure that, you know, somebody's not home and calling the sheriffs because somebody's on their roof or on their backyard doing work when they're not supposed to be doing it. So let's just be proactive so that they can actually communicate with us their exact plans. And same thing with gas company as well. But with... In regards to the SCE meetings, if you guys have those meetings, you know, I'd probably ask one of us to be on part of that meeting, just so we have some weight on it, because I feel like, you know, they've been kicking the can down the road a little bit, and they haven't really been giving us anything concrete. So let's make sure they're held accountable to make sure they turn their lights back on. And lastly is, I know the holidays are coming up, and I know people have families, we have families, staff want to take vacations and whatnot, so I just want to make sure that you guys have a transition plan or some type of plan so that we're not dropping the ball for two, three weeks, four weeks, on things that we need to be executing in the landslide area. And I know, Ara, you're on top of that, so I just want to make sure we don't have this lull period during the holidays where we lose time when we couldn't actually be doing work. Hopefully that makes sense. I know that kind of sounds kind of harsh, but a lot of folks right now are without power and gas, so I just want to make that a note for you guys, that when we're enjoying, a lot of folks don't have lights and gas. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor... Councilmember Bradley.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the report on the status of the Greater Landslide Complex, the report on the FEMA voluntary property acquisition buyout, and receive and file the update on the city's expenditures to date for the 2425 fiscal year. Also adopt resolution... Whatever the first resolution is going to be.
2470 and then the...
Yeah, that one. To continue the state of emergency for another 60 days, as well as continue the state of emergency for the community bend, Portuguese Bend Community Association.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Yes.
Councilwoman Ferraro.
Yes.
Councilman Seo.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Alegría.
Yes.
Mayor Crouches.
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item number two.
Can we take a short recess? Yeah, I think you might colleagues need a quick recess. We'll take a 10-minute recess, please. Thank you, Mayor Crouches.
Even update report on various city projects along the Western Avenue Commercial Corridor. I do not have any requests to speak.
All right, staff report.
The bike lane to nowhere.
At the request of Mayor Crookshank and Mayor Protem Allegria, this agenda item is to provide updates on three projects currently underway along the city's Western Avenue Commercial Corridor. This includes the Western Avenue Storefront Improvement Program, the Western Avenue Commercial Corridor Traffic Flow Improvement Project, and the Western Avenue Beautification Project. I'm going to start the presentation with the storefront improvement program and then turn it over to Ramsey for the other two project updates. Improving the aesthetics and traffic flow along Western Avenue has been a high priority for past and current city councils with a desire to improve traffic flows, enhance and support local businesses, and provide the community with access to commercial services such as retail and restaurants. In the current city council goals under quality of life, the goal is to maintain and improve the quality of life for RPV residents. The projects that fall under this goal include the Western Avenue Beautification Project and the Western Avenue Storefront Improvement Program. Under the public infrastructure, the goal is to maintain and improve all public infrastructure. The project that falls under this goal related to Western Avenue is to improve traffic flow along the corridor. This is the timeline for the city council's authorization of the Western Avenue Storefront Improvement Program. At the March goal-setting session, staff presented this potential program to align with the objective of supporting local businesses. In June, city council added the project to the goals and included $100,000 of funding for this program for this fiscal year. And in September, staff presented the program guidelines, sample application and grant agreement template, which the city council approved. As a reminder of the program guidelines, the improvements assisted by the program should enhance or restore the physical condition or appearance of a building or business. Proposed improvements must be visible from the street. There are three different tiers or levels of the grants, the mini-grants. The, or for a grant amount of 5,000 up to $5,000, 50% match. Total project costs of 10,000 or greater. And that's going to be typically for a project that might include some painting awnings, signage. And then the Tier Two builds on that for significant storefront improvements. Grant amount of up to $10,000, 50% match required. The project cost can be 20,000 or greater. Tier Three, now this is for the multiple tenant grants for commercial buildings where there are several tenants. Grant funds can be used for any of those types of improvements under Tier One or Tier Two. It's just for a greater project. And then also here is the map of the program area. It includes all of the commercially zoned property in the RPV city limits along Western Avenue. For applications, applicants to the program must be commercial businesses or property owners located within the program area. Franchises and chain retailers are eligible under the program. Up to $1,000 may be used for architectural and design services. Also listed here are eligible improvements. I'm not going to go through them. We've done this presentation before, but just for anybody who might be watching or want to go back and look at the presentation, here's the information. Staff have conducted extensive outreach. We have created an online presence for the program with a webpage, a listserv, and a designated email address and a QR code. So anybody who's watching, you can click on the QR code and it will take you to that webpage for the information on the program. We conducted a virtual workshop as well on the 21st of October, and that video is also available online. It gives a lot of the details about the program and how to apply. And then as well, we had staff did a door-to-door visit of the business owners and property owners and have done site visits with some of the multi-tenant property owners. The application, here's the timeline. The application period is open. We had that virtual information session. The application period ends on December 1st. We're then going to have a review panel, process the applications, and finalize that, giving recommendations to city council in February. The city council will then consider grant award recommendations at the second meeting in February, and then grant agreements will be issued. We're expecting for Tier One, those mini-grants, that those would be completed by the end of June, and the Tier Two and Tier Three in September. We have had, to date, we've received four inquiries from business owners expressing interest. We know of two multi-tenant property owners interested in submitting an application, and we actually received our first application this afternoon. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ramsey.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. I'll start by discussing the traffic flow improvements project and then the beautification project. So just as a reminder, the earlier phase of this project was the scoping, which has now been completed, and that included a comprehensive traffic study identifying the infrastructure needs for the traffic flow improvements and preparing a scope for the final engineering. Just as a reminder of the scope of the improvements, primarily most of the scope of improvements focuses on traffic signal operations, and that is to optimize the traffic signals. Currently, the traffic signals are run by different agencies, City of L.A. as well as Caltrans. And so this will, this project proposes to bring the majority of the signals under Caltrans operations, as well as to implement newer technology for the traffic signals to detect vehicle patterns and adjust the signal timing automatically based on those patterns, also adding some turn lanes and some safety enhancements. So as mentioned earlier, this would result in 17 signalized, sorry, 13 signalized intersections of the 17 coming under the near-real-time traffic signal, traffic vehicle monitoring and traffic signal optimization. So as the vehicle patterns are detected by the signal, the timing is adjusted nearly automatically based on those patterns. Additionally, turn lanes included at Western and Crestwood, left turn pockets being extended at several locations so that left-turning traffic doesn't back up into the through lanes and obstruct through traffic and impede the flow. Also, we will be continuing to investigate flashing yellow arrows with Caltrans as directed by the city council in the earlier meeting. And finally, some safety enhancements, primarily updating signage so that it meets current standards and also restriping a small portion and adding red curb to prevent site obstructions. The project is currently in the design and engineering phase. We've procured a, or we are at the final step of procuring a design consultant. So the next step would be final plans, the Caltrans encroachment permit before we move to construction. And there you see the schedule. We estimate to be ready to go out to bid with the physical improvements in approximately nine months after obtaining the Caltrans permit and then starting construction, which is expected to take approximately one year. And later, you'll see how the schedule aligns with the beautification project, and I'll talk about that. The cost estimate, and again, just as a reminder that this project is fully funded by a Metro grant, no local match dollars. The planning, environmental, and engineering budget is approximately 1.3 million with construction, including inspection, at approximately 3 million. So this evening, the city council is being asked to approve a contract with Iteris to complete Phase Two, the final engineering design services. There you see the contract amount and the contingency. And I'll pause for traffic flow questions before moving on to beautification.
I have a quick question. I noticed that the last, and I know they're in the city of Los Angeles, so I kind of know the answer to that, the last four signals from First Street to Ninth Street. And I understand why they're City of L.A., because they're probably all physically in the city of L.A. But are, is the City of L.A. also going to synchronize those lights as well, even though they're owned by two different agencies? Or, I don't know what our discussions are with the City of L.A., but it seems like a lot of our residents, me included, uses the First Street intersection all the time to get to San Pedro. And I know a lot of people come around to the Ninth Street one from our city as well. So it's heavily used by Rancho Palos Verdes residents. So is there anything going to be done with those four? Could those four be included, or?
So two of those will be included, number 16 and 17 on the image there at First Street. The others, in the traffic study, those were not identified as really key congestion areas. It's really the other 17 that stood out as the key congestion area. So that's not to say that we can't continue the discussion in the future, but we found that the biggest gain would be in those first 17.
Okay, oh, so you said the First Street and then the one just south of that would be included?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
In terms of the upgrades and signal optimization.
So those would be the best ones. Okay, very good. Thank you, Ramsey. Any other questions? Yes, council member Farrar.
I have a question about that same area. From, let me think, First Street and then going south. It seemed like they were blocking off and have striped to, instead of making that two lanes, it's only one lane of traffic on, on.
On Western.
Yeah.
And you mean if you're going north?
No, south.
As part of the Caltrans Bike Lane and Pedestrian Improvements Project, there is some construction, temporary traffic control in place where in places they may be narrowing down as part of the traffic for the construction period.
Well, they really made a mess of it right now.
I can research that a little bit more and have the team follow up with Caltrans, see if there's anything we can do there.
Because they were.
That's the bike lane that none of us asked for, none of us wanted and wanted to get rid of.
Yeah, and the thing of it was, we were going north on the street the other day, and you couldn't, you couldn't get into the left turn, what used to be a left lane. And it only went to become a turn lane. So there was really only one side, one lane of traffic allowed at that point in time on the main street. They've marked it off.
We'll follow up with our contacts at Caltrans to see if there are any adjustments that could be made to the temporary traffic control.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's, it's pretty heavy traffic in that area on, on the street there. And to, to all of a sudden take two lanes down to one on either side, that really gums up the works. That's what it does. Okay.
We'll follow up.
Yeah, they have, Caltrans has not done the greatest job of coordinating with our city. They started construction without them notifying us.
I don't think they notified the City of Los Angeles either.
I'm not sure they know which city they're in.
I don't think they care.
I don't think they care.
Okay, you want to continue?
Continue with the next.
For care.
Would you like me to continue to the beautification?
Yes, sorry, I got in a row.
Let's make it beautiful.
So the beautification project, two miles from Summerland to Peninsula Drive for the, and that's the Rancho Palos Verdes portion of that area. The project's scope essentially is to install trees, shrubs, other plants that are Caltrans-approved, native and drought tolerant. These are some examples of what these would look like. Again, these are just concept examples. And the detailed concept plans were presented previously to the city council. I shouldn't say detailed, the concept plans were presented previously to the city council. An open house was held to solicit feedback. And so the next step would be, sorry, and then the bus shelters are also included as part of the concept. Again, these are concepts to be finalized as part of the next step, which is the plan revisions and finalizing the concept plans into final plans. During the final design of this project, we learned that the Caltrans Bike Lanes project would be narrowing the medians. That had an impact on our medians. Additionally, through our coordination efforts with City of L.A., we learned that they didn't have funding for improvements in their part of the city. And so now we need to make some changes to our plans so that we can move forward with just the parkway improvements, excluding the medians until Caltrans is done with their work, and then also excluding the City of L.A. portion. So those plan revisions will take approximately three months. And then the permanent permit and agreements with Caltrans, another six months to be ready for construction at the same time as the traffic flow improvements project. If the two projects do line up exactly, we can coordinate and have one contractor sync them up with one bid package for some efficiencies and of course to minimize disruptions. If one lags or leads the other, then we can adjust accordingly as well. The cost estimate for this project, and this comes out of the CIP, Planning, Environmental, Engineering, approximately 375,000 with the remainder in construction funds, including inspection for the parkways and the street furniture, primarily the bus shelters. This excludes future crosswalk or median improvements. And that concludes my presentation.
I have questions on this one, too. Couple things. I know you said Caltrans-approved, and that makes sense. But if we could utilize the land concerns, the nursery plants and other natives that are being grown right here in our city, that seemed like it would make sense if you could somehow work that into specifications. And then I guess the other thing, like you mentioned, Caltrans has.
And then I guess the other thing, like you mentioned, Caltrans has embarked on changing things out there. At very least, they could potentially provide the CAD files for their base maps since we're having to then redraw everything because of that. I'm sure the survey information that we paid probably quite a bit of money for is now changed. So now you have to re-survey as well. Is that, that correct?
Yeah, I think because most of their, because their work is really limited to inside the roadway, and we're going to be sticking to outside the roadway for this current phase, we shouldn't need to redo any survey, but we can coordinate with them and get their survey information.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great if Caltrans could share their CAD files with you to save you some time and effort. Other questions, comments? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for bringing this topic forward just one more time for us to, to look at, and the mayor and I, before we depart, I think we've continued to express our, our support for this vision, for this area of our community since we got here. And, and I'm pleased that we're moving forward, although incrementally with what's being proposed tonight. The only comment I had was actually related to just feedback I've gotten from the community as of late, which is the efforts that we made to put some plants and items into the medians have died. And I haven't, honestly, I haven't paid much attention the last couple of months, but my understanding from having talked to a few residents in that area recently is that although those efforts we, we put forth a year ago were appreciated, that some of the things that were in the medians, particularly the plant life, have died and need to be, you know, withdrawn or, or replaced. So I guess my only comment, and I guess I'm looking at R. Ramsey, would be just to say, while we're waiting for the, you know, the broader program, perhaps we can go back and just make sure that anything that's died, we remove and, you know, plant anything new that might last at least a little bit of time while we're waiting for the beautification of those medians to come.
Mr. Mayor Protem, consider it done. Actually, my team told me that they, they just did that. I haven't driven it in a couple of weeks, but they told me.
You shouldn't have said that, Ramsey. You could have said it. When I drive tomorrow, I'd be like, wow, that was really fast.
I was, I was on Western Avenue just the other day, and I noticed that they replanted that median. So, and it looked really nice.
All right. Well, you preempted my, my comment, but I think the people in the community really appreciate it, and, and they notice those things. So that's it. I have full support for the program. I'd love to see it continue to move forward. And I think there's an opportunity to continue to sort of shape, you know, what, what it looks like and visual impact of all of these things in the future. I'm particularly excited about the traffic flow improvement efforts. I think that's going to be incredibly impactful. I know the timeline you had up on the screen was, you know, takes us into late '26, but as we've said before, anything we can do to expedite that is going to really alleviate and improve qual, you know, burden and improve quality of life for all of the people that live in that corridor on both sides, City of Los Angeles residents as well as the City of RPV residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Seo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for a public certification, Ramsey, in regards to the funding for this, I know the price tag is pretty big. Is Measure M covering basically the cost of all of what we're planning to do?
So the Measure M grant covers the traffic flow improvements project, but the beautification project is city funds.
The city funds, right. So in terms of the city funds, I know we were trying to speak with Councilmember, L.A. City Councilmember Tim McCosker's office and trying to work with some type of partnership. Did we, did we make any headway on that? In terms of their coming to the table saying that they contribute a certain amount of money to the area that we're trying to beautify?
They, they came back and told us that they, they didn't have funds and, and they didn't foresee funding being available in the near term.
Wow. Can we, let's circle back with them the next fiscal year, because I think Councilman McCosker is the chair of the budget appropriations or just budget in general. So let's see if we can circle back with them to make sure that it's still on his radar so we can actually try to offset some of the costs that we have, especially with the spending that we're doing in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? I appreciate that, Ramsey. I too like the Mayor Protem, Western Avenue and our eastern neighbors are obviously a huge, a major part of our city. That's our major corridor for business. And I think it's critical that we continue to increase traffic flow, which has always been a struggle for that. And, and I, I like, you know, what, what Brandy's doing as well. I think that program is really important. I, I'm sure, and I, I don't know if you personally did some of the door to door as well, but I bet you heard some good, interesting things from the people that are out there. Hopefully, they're not struggling too much. And hopefully, you heard some things that maybe just not beautification, but other ideas for the city to help them out, to thrive. I think it's a great opportunity, not just for people that are visiting our city, but for, you know, stores and restaurants and other things, for the people that live in and around that area. I think that, that, that's the best. I mean, when you start to get people walking to restaurants and having something to, you know, instead of having to get in their car and drive to another city. So thank you for doing that as well. And it's awesome to hear that we got our first application. I was going to ask you if we did. I was a little worried about the answer. I'm so proud that we actually got one, and you have three others. And even if, even if we only have one or two this first time around, I think you're going to see some tangible improvements. And then, you know, next time around, when you bring that same idea back to future councils for, you know, consideration, it'll be even that much better. So you learn. I was just driving Artesia the other day, and I used to live in North Redondo Beach. And, you know, that area always kind of, it was a, a major corridor, but some of the businesses were not spending much money on their upgrades. And I definitely saw some, several storefronts that have been improved by what you did in Redondo Beach. So that kind of made me feel good about what you're bringing over here to Western Avenue. I think there's a real great opportunity for us in that regard. So other than just a great job for both you and getting these going, and, and we want to keep momentum going, just like Mayor Protem said, I'll entertain a motion unless there's further discussion.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
And I'll second that.
Councilwoman Ferraro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bradley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alegría?
Yes.
Mayor Krikshen?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to item number three. Consideration and possible action, receive a status update on efforts to potentially acquire two United States Coast Guard properties in Rancho Palos Verdes.
Or not.
Matt? Matt, where are you?
Who's doing the staff report?
I'm here.
There he is.
I think, Dan, have you been in the PowerPoint up? Thank you, Dan. All right. Thank you, Mayor, and the council. And may I say really quickly to Mayor Krikshen and Mayor Protem Alegría, it's been a pleasure working with you during your, all your terms and wish you all the best going forward. I know you're not off, off the council yet, but just wanted to thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Next slide, please, Dan. But now you are providing an update on the coast, two Coast Guard properties. The city's had a longstanding interest in both of these properties. The two properties are the very well-known Point Frontera Lighthouse and the probably lesser well-known Battery Barns at the end of City Hall property. Councilmember Bradley requested an update on these two properties recently. Next slide, please. The first one is the, obviously the well-known, the heavily photographed, the iconic historic Point Frontera Lighthouse. Acquiring that property has been an official goal going way back to the city's 1975 general plan, and it's still a part of the, the new general plan, the revised one. It's still an active navigational lighthouse, although there are no Coast Guard personnel on the site and have been for years. The second property, Battery Barns, is a 3.9 acre site. It also includes a 5,000 square foot covered structure. It is located adjacent to the Kendita Civic Center in the far western end. It was used in World War II as our, for, as part of the coastal artillery defense. It had a large anti-aircraft guns stationed there. You can see the outline of one in, in the graph, in the photo on the, this slide. It's currently and has for a long time been owned and operated by the Coast Guard, mainly used for, as a navigational aid. There are no personnel on site. Next slide. This map here, the, the small triangle, the top shows Battery Barns next to City Hall, and down below, the larger blue area shows the, the lighthouse on the coast next to the interpretive center. Next slide, please. So just some background and some discussion. The city has sent letters to the U.S. Coast Guard, both in April 2022 and again in February 2023. It expressed the, the interest in both, in either an acquisition or a joint use of the site. The letters both noted the deep respect the city has for the historic value both sites possess, and also a strong commitment to maintaining those properties, both the grounds and the, and the structures and buildings on site, also increasing the chance for the public to access and appreciate these historic, historic buildings and areas. And in response to those, the, we found out that the Coast Guard, at this point, is engaged in a lengthy, based Los Angeles, Long Beach, divestiture, development and evaluation process, which is estimated will take several years to complete. So another interesting development recently, of course, is the sad ones in many ways. It's the Wayfarers Chapel, obviously a national historic landmark designed by this, by Frank Lloyd Wright Jr., the son of Frank Lloyd Wright. This heavily visited and used and beautiful site was damaged by the recent land movement, had to be dismantled, is now being stored offsite. The Swedenborgian Church has been looking at, at possible locations for the site. The particular materials, the, the redwood and the stone and the beams used in the Wayfarers Chapel require a very similar microclimate in order to prevent any further deterioration to these materials. The two U.S. Coast Guard properties obviously are located both very near to the, the Wayfarers Chapel, Long Time, Long, Wayfarers Chapel, Long Town location. Both the sites have sufficient space, natural settings, a very similar microclimate, and of course, tremendous ocean views. And I believe the addition of the chapel would add potential historic and aesthetic appeal. It could also be potentially part of, of location at, at Battery Barns. I think it's the preferred location, also potentially at City Hall as part of the Civic Center master plan. At this point, it's a very preliminary, back to that slide, please. At this point, it's a very preliminary stage. There have been ongoing discussions with the Wayfarers Chapel Board President about the possibility of a relocation, reassembly. Next slide, please. The city has done some outreach and recently to elected officials. Letter was sent to Representative Ted Luce and U.S. Senators Padilla and Butler, basically requesting support both for the potential acquisition of the two properties, Battery Barns and the Lighthouse, as well as bringing up the issue of the Wayfarers Chapel relocation. City staff, including City Manager R. Maranian, met with field staff in October. The very, very helpful and detailed discussion. Their takeaway, the basic advice was to really, given the lengthy process the Coast Guard is going through, their advice was to focus on pursuing a joint use agreement with the Coast Guard and consider acquisition as some, at some point in the, in the future. There's been outreach to the U.S. Coast Guard to set up a meeting with both staff and elected official representatives to explore this possibility, and also have a site meeting at both Battery Barns and the Lighthouse. Next slide. So tonight, we're, we're looking for, for council to receive and file the status update and provide direct, and your direct staff to continue exploring the potential acquisition, which would also include the possibility of a joint use agreement regarding, regarding the Coast Guard properties. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Matt. Questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Bradley.
Okay, Matt. You got me on this one. So on page two of the staff report, Battery Barns had 16-inch guns? I thought they were 8-inch guns. You told me before they were eight. Now they're 16?
I can double check that, but I believe they were 16-inch guns. I'm sorry if I misspoke at some earlier time.
Okay, I think we're going to check that. I don't, okay, check that, because that shocked me when I read that in the staff report. For active usage for the lighthouse grounds, I believe Mayor Krikshen and I participated in the last of the cliff rescue training sessions there.
Well, we didn't really participate. We watched.
We were out there on the cliff.
I wouldn't say we participated. I would say more watched, witnessed. Go ahead, proceed. There was a dummy that was pulled off the cliff.
It looked a lot like, no, it didn't look like me. But they're currently not doing cliff rescues any, uh, training there anymore. Is that after they moved the, the helicopter squadron up to, I think it's up to San Bruno now? Is that true? So they currently are doing no active operations there?
I'm not sure if they're not doing the active operation and no, no one is stationed there. I'm not really actually aware if they are still doing the exercises there.
Okay. And then on, back on Battery Barns, I noticed that over the years, the, the communication poles that they had, the guide wires are, have decayed on one or two sides of a couple of them. I think those are starting to get to a position that we need to encourage the Coast Guard to remove those just for public safety, because I don't think that they are structured, they're becoming structurally unsound. When we have our next meeting with them, we need to see what they can do to help start to mitigate that, because they're, I'm just afraid they're going to fall over.
I know roughly a year or so ago, we reached out to the Coast Guard about a number of concerns that were raised about the conditions. I think that's something we can certainly follow up on again.
Okay, thanks. Let me know when we schedule, schedule the next meeting. You know that I'm highly interested in this. Thanks, Matt. That's it.
Any further questions, comments? I like the idea that you talked about that, you're right, the, the acquisition might take many, many years, but maybe there's an opportunity for finding a joint use agreement in the meantime so that it's still their property and we can start to do city functions there. So thank you for bringing that idea, too. That seems very promising. I guess with that, I'll, is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, the motion to receive and file.
Second.
And what about directing staff to continuing its efforts?
Yes.
I'm sure that Councilmember Bradley would say that's part of his motion.
Absolutely.
Okay, so items one and two of council action, it's moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilwoman Bradley?
Yes, and Matt's going to figure out how big the guns were.
Councilwoman Seo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferraro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alegría?
Yes.
Mayor Krikshen?
Yes.
Motion passes. With that, we can move to our future agenda item.
Any future agenda items? Eric and I should put a bunch of them on there.
I was just going to say that two out of five of us are exempt from that.
Got some really great ideas.
Yeah, roll that grenade in and.
And then leave. I don't have any, any over here. Okay, it looks like there's none. Next item, please.
The next item are our city council oral reports.
Okay, Councilmember Seo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with a meeting with Verizon. R. and I had a, a call with Verizon in regards to small wireless facilities. They gave us a briefing on what they plan to do and the applications that they're submitting. That, I believe they're looking at 20 small wireless facilities throughout the city. They're trying to energize or try to put facilities in with landslide areas. So they're trying to figure that portion out, but I think we're making headway with them and with specifically Verizon. So hopefully, if they do put up small wireless facilities, they can co-locate with other carriers. Like I said before, I went to DC to lobby, met with our congressional reps and appropriations to try to carve out some money. Hopefully, that bears fruit. On top of that, like I said before, too, we're going, I'm going back up in December to Sacramento, and then I think legal cities is in, or the legislative tours in January. So we'll see those individuals again for state legislature. So hopefully, we can put a bug in their ear to try to appropriate some money for this coming fiscal year or the next. The last one I'd like to talk about was Veterans Day. Dan and his team did a phenomenal job. We had a lot of feedback from the vets saying that it was a beautiful ceremony. I know Mayor, as well as Mayor Protem was there, as well as Ms. Ferraro. We missed Dave, but we had a great program. Everybody gave great speeches. There was great food there, and the environment was, was great. And hopefully, in the future, it starts to pick up more steam. We have more folks there, but it was an absolutely beautiful program, and I commend you, and thank you very much, Dan. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, well said, and, and you're being modest. You, you talked a little bit about your service for our country, and it was a very moving speech, and it was very well done. So kudos. Councilmember Bradley.
The only thing that I
The only thing that I wanted to mention was being able to participate in one of the Wednesday's dinners at La Dara Linda with the residents that have been affected by the landslide in such horrible ways. It was just great to be with the community and have a little bit of respite and sit with some of our community members at La Dara Linda. It was a great evening and I really do appreciate everything staff and the community has done to come together to really help those folks. It really is well received and much appreciated by them.
Well said. I will say that our residents do appreciate that their city manager has gone to every one of those. That's something they notice. Thank you for doing that, Ara. It's much appreciated. Councilmember Ferraro?
Well, I went to the same Veterans Saturday breakfast, breakfast it was, and I heard Councilwoman Seo's speech and I just want to say thank you for serving in our nation's armed forces, because it was really great to see all the, the people that came out for the breakfast. And I know that, you know, it's sort of like anything else, when you're involved, you're so involved and then all of a sudden you come home and nobody can tell that you've been in this situation or been doing this for months or years. And it seemed like all the gentlemen and the women that came, because there were some women there, that had served seemed to really appreciate it. And I'm so glad we, we started this and that we're going to continue it in the future. I think it was a great idea, Ara.
Well said. Mayor Protem.
It's been said, but great job, Paul. You represented our community well and I'm honored to, to know you and to serve with you here. And I, I thought, I thought it was a wonderful, then I think it could be a peninsula-wide event, I think, in the next year. I think there's just so many veterans in this community and such an opportunity to celebrate them and I could see it in their eyes. You know, I know we had a chance to walk around and talk to everybody that was there and it was just really a special event. You know, exceeded my expectations and just to stop for a moment and let those folks who sacrificed so much know how much we appreciate them, it was really special. So keep it going.
Great, yeah, the group photo is fantastic with everyone there. I mean, almost all the people that attended were veterans, of course, their family of veterans and of course, don't forget the Boy Scouts that were there as well.
And the Boy Scouts did such a nice job of, of, first of all, presenting the flags and then just helping out and they were kind enough to get me a plate, which I really appreciated. So.
She had two plates?
Okay, so I got two plates. Because Ara got me one, too. So, and nobody wanted any extras, so I took it home for dinner. But it was just, it was really nice and the kids that were there, I, I know that they were appreciated for all the things that they were doing with helping out and, and not, not just the flag ceremony, but they helped out with all of the serving of the meal and everything, so.
Right, and, and Mr. Lorenzen's story in regards to, you know, this whole episode and coming over to this country and the first thing he saw was, you know, the peninsula and so there's just a really touching, so well done, Dan and Park and Rec staff and Ara. That was really, and like was said, hopefully it's an annual event. I love the idea of it being a peninsula-wide event. That's pretty, that's a nice idea as well. So I guess Eric, you and I, this is our last full meeting. The, the events that were talked about, I attended. I didn't attend any other meeting. We're going to be adjourning tonight to December 11th. Was there anything else I need to mention?
So you'd like, the council would like to cancel the?
Oh, yeah, right, of course. We're, we're canceling the first meeting in December and we're going to be having our next meeting on December 11th, so.
Be there then, so we can say good things about you.
You can say whatever you want. It's free country.
And I will.
You got him right here.
I'm going to try and keep him shut up long enough to at least say some good things about you.
No, you could try. Good luck. All right, well, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
And you're adjourning to December 11th at 6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M. I didn't say 6:00 P.M. Thank you, Ara.